Call the meeting to order. Clerk Slater, please call the roll.
Trustee Rizzi.
Here.
Trustee Nordhook.
Yes.
Supervisor Les Prince.
Here.
Treasurer Corstange.
Here.
Trustee Nord Dyke.
Present.
Trustee Shipley.
Present.
And Clerk Slater, present. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
While we approve tonight's agenda, I think we all have a doubt. We received a call from legal counsel late last week inquiring about the potentially waiver of a conflict of interest. Like to add that to the agenda for the board to be informed about it and then make a decision about it. I think we've got someone from Foster Swift available hopefully tonight, right? Okay. We're going to add that to the end if that's all right. So that would be a new.
Zero five nine.
A new agenda item. Where would it be, Sue?
Zero five nine.
So zero five nine and waive potential conflict of interest between Englesma Homes and Cascade Charter Township. I guess is what I would put it as.
Make a motion to approve with the change.
Order.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried with that additional item. Having no presentations, now is the time for public comments on anything that is scheduled for tonight's board's business. So tonight's public comments at this point in the meeting would be on the Triathlon Road closures. Also, we've got a potential extension of public water to the Cascade Rec Park, getting it off the well that it's on right now. And then a change order payment for the part of the pedestrian bridge project on the across the Thornapple River on Cascade Road. Any public comments on those? Oh, an additional potential conflict of interest, which would be hard to comment on because you don't know a lot about it, but. Any comments on those items are welcome right now, and please state your name and address for record keeping. And there will be another opportunity following the board's business to comment on anything. Anyone virtually?
Yeah, Scott, just a second. Okay. Are you talking, Scott?
Hello?
Yes.
Hi there, Scott Van Solkma. Sorry, I'm not able to make it there in person tonight. I just have two quick questions. One regarding the Cascade Rec Park, which it is good to probably gets, you know, some city water, especially where it's at with a close proximity to the airport and possible PFAS contamination. My only question is, will we still be able?
You can hear us, we can't hear you.
I think we lost you. The answer is probably.
Maybe.
Not sure.
Also, the other thing regarding the billing for the bridge, which I'm glad that Spaulding Decker was able to come back and get everything copacetic regarding the change orders. Again, as I brought it up back in August, did they ever talk to Davis Construction during the break between Phase One and Phase Two, when obviously Davis was working a lot more hours than Spaulding Decker had already budgeted for during that first session? Did they ever talk and maybe consider coming back to the board to say, hey, they're actually working a lot more than we had anticipated? At least for that, was there any communication between those two entities during the recess between like January and March? So those are my two comments. Thank you.
Thank you.
I think we missed part of his first time that.
Hello?
Scott, are you still there?
Did that work? Hello?
I think I heard it. I did. Mr. Van Solkma, are you still there?
Can I try again?
Do the Rec Park Water Extension, could you?
The Rec Walk, basically, will we still be able to use the well water for irrigation? Was my question on that, you know? Obviously, for drinking water, it's probably better to have city water. But for the irrigation of all the grasses and fields, if we can still use the pump, the well for that, that'd be a lot cheaper than paying city water. And did you hear my comments regarding the bridge Spaulding Decker?
We did. We got those. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other public comments? Article six approval of the consent agenda, is there a motion or discussion?
We made a motion to approve a consent agenda as presented.
Support.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Financial actions, is there a motion or discussion?
Make a motion for the financial actions as described.
Support.
It's a motion by trustee Rizzi, supported by treasurer Corstange, to approve tonight's financial actions. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Having no unfinished business, Article nine, first item of new business, zero five six, twenty twenty five. Consider approval of resolution for Tribe for Health Huntington Bank Triathlon Road Closure. Manager Smith?
Thank you, supervisor. This has become an annual request from this organization to get support to close the roads through the Kent County Sheriff's Office. I believe we have a representative from the organization here tonight to answer any questions in regards to the event. There's a few changes this year, but I think the RV is pretty self-explanatory. The event's on June seventh, I believe. Yes. And so looking for support of a resolution to close the roads for the triathlon. And John, is it John? John's in the audience if you have any questions.
Essentially, is essentially the same closure as last year?
I think you're extending it, but not in Cascade, right? The Cascade closure is the same, but it is changing. Yes.
And we didn't have any excessive complaints or anything from last time?
No.
Zero.
Then I make a motion to approve.
I just have a motion. I comment, once again, living in the middle of that triathlon route. It's not been a any problem whatsoever. They've been very courteous. And residents have been able to get in and out without any difficulty or endangerment to the triathletes. Go ahead with your motion.
Make a motion to approve the resolution. Support.
It's a motion by trustee Rizzi, supported by trustee Shipley, to approve the resolution as presented. Clerk Slater, please call the roll.
Trustee Nord Dyke.
Yes.
Treasurer Corstange.
Yes.
Trustee Nordhook.
Yes.
Trustee Rizzi.
Yeah, she was doing that.
Trustee Shipley.
Yes.
Slater, yes. Supervisor Les Prince.
Yes, motion carried.
Pay attention.
Yeah. Item zero five seven, twenty twenty five. Consider approval of design service proposal to extend public water to Recreation Park. We've got engineer Thorne, and also, did you want to say anything, Manager Smith, before?
No, I'll let Eric take it.
Happy to report that we are a matter of weeks away from effectively wrapping up the Burger Platte Water Main Extension that's been going on really since two thousand eighteen nineteen. Identification of PFAS and well water in that neighborhood. Since then, over two hundred or by the end of this project, over two hundred homes will have connected to city water through various grant funding sources and the city of Kern Rapids administering that project. That leaves Recreation Park on a park that is on two wells for drinking, one well for irrigation. Early on in the project, the consultant engineer, Prina Newhoff, did come to the township. This was a conversation I had with former manager Swayze. It was actually before I was here that they approached the township about extending water main also into Recreation Park. Recreation Park was not included as part of the grant funding. It wasn't eligible because to serve Recreation Park would require its own six inch diameter, several hundred feet long water main. It's a much bigger ordeal than, say, a residential address. But since then, we haven't, you know, quote unquote, found the dollars to actually do that project. Now, since we do have county PFAS remediation dollars, and we are nearing the end of this project, where I know we have spent some of those dollars on resurfacing, we have spent some on planting trees, and I believe there are still some of those dollars remaining. We are looking at now extending that water main from a stub that was purposely left on Forest Valley Drive in the northeast corner of the park. It would go through, about halfway through the park, and then anything in the park would be able to be served off that six inch main. And that includes everything that's there, the restroom. It could be the irrigation, and it could be a future building that we wanted to add there, what have you. There would be the capacity to serve current and future needs. And I know Mr. Van Solkma asked, as far as using it for irrigation, a number of residents in the Burger Platte opted to connect to city water for drinking and continue to use their well for irrigation. For all intents and purposes, that could be done here. We could plummet so that we could continue to use well for irrigation. We could plummet to connect to city water. It's really, and this is nothing that needs to be figured out right now, per se. Right now, we're just we're just asking for permission to go forward with the engineering, and during the engineering, we could make that determination what we would like to do. But the point being is that both options would be available. I talked to the Kent County Health Department yesterday. And as far as they're concerned, if you can, for future reference, as this isn't even just for this project, but if you can drill a well that tests clear, there is no PFAS contamination in the well, you could use that well even in the future for irrigation purposes. Now, that is not to say one or the other is the right answer, but that they would be available and they could be discussed through the engineering process.
Eric, when we, my understanding is we had the water tested at the park. Did we test one of the wells, two of the wells, or all three?
I believe what is tested, and Dan would be better at this, our Parks Facilities Director, I'm fairly confident he can, he tests the two drinking water because I asked him the other day about the third well being the irrigation well.
It's right there.
I'm ninety-nine percent sure he tests the two drinking. I know we test at least the drinking water. I do not believe they test the irrigation.
The two drinking water wells are at about the same depth, but the irrigation well is almost eighty feet deeper, I think, eighty-five feet deeper. So it may be.
I know what you're saying. I caution against the logic because I just know from Eagles conversations in the Hillsborough area, there are wells that are here that are clean, wells that are here that are contaminated.
And the plumes move.
It's a wild thing, and if I could ever understand how groundwater works, I might work in that field, but it is very difficult to understand and unpredictable, unfortunately.
The location of Rec Park being right in between, like the location with its proximity to the airport.
It's in the target.
The key, and knowing how some of the tests were done in the past. The key being that the county, sorry, the remediation dollars are available, not from the township, not from any taxpayer dollars, not from any residents, but from funding that was made available and is still available after the completion of the regular schedule, regularly scheduled water main project. I think it's the prudent thing to do is for this township to use those in an appropriate manner because you know, while they're available to be used, and I think this is a totally appropriate manner to use those dollars.
I agree with using those dollars for the engineering at this time. I would consider exploring the opportunity of using the current irrigation well for irrigation for a while because the well was just put in in twenty sixteen, and we just invested almost nine thousand dollars into it this year. It seems to me we'd probably get eight or nine years more of use out of it before it needs its next major repair.
I just don't want to not install the, have the installation for irrigation through city water. I want to have that completed so that because down the road, the funds wouldn't be available, and then it would be.
We want to get all that we can now, and then maybe flip the switch when we need.
That'd be fine, too.
And I do think, too, that we need personally, I would need to hear more information about the PFAS. I know your discussion with the Health Department just said, oh, if you drilled a well today and it was clean, you can continue to use it for that. Just because these fields are irrigating a park where people sit in the grass, their kids roll down the hill, they play in it, they play soccer, they play sports. I would like to hear more about any research or exposure that, you know, if there's any evidence that says this is not safe to know, I would hate to put any residents, no matter the cost that we've put into it if there is a risk to residents are using that park. So I think that's, again, a discussion that would have to happen later when we get to that point, but I do think we would need more information to be able to make that decision, not just based on the amount of money that we've spent.
It's the same county health department that approved the wells to develop that new subdivision off of Forty-Eighth Street where now the residents who paid hundreds of thousand dollars for their huge brand-new builds are in a situation where they have undrinkable water that tastes terrible and no recourse, as the county approved those wells, and that happens to be right between the airport and the Thornapple River. I'm not ripping on you, Eric, or that's just a comment in general on.
Nope, I'm just giving you information as far as repairing. I, and good conscience would just tell you if we do use an irrigation well, what goes into if we have to repair it or replace it, as far as I understand we could. Our PFAS remediation committee, public committee, they have the same, many of the same concerns that Wendy, or Treasurer Christage has just mentioned. The application of irrigated water with PFAS in it on lawns, whether or not that's a public health issue, especially in a park. It's a contentious issue. I'm not sure anybody can give you a thorough answer, but it's well noted.
Think if there was an issue there, then the Health Department would have given people whole-house filters instead of two tap filters in their house.
But they don't. Yeah, but the newer residents that were put onto the the city water were required to tap their wells, like.
No, they were able to keep them for irrigation.
Well, so, yeah, I don't want to confuse it. There's another PFAS project that's happening in a different township. That one, the funding is contingent on the capping of the wells with that particular project.
Right.
This project here.
That's from the state, though, right? That is the state, not county.
Yeah, I don't know. I don't know the actual origin of the funds, if it was the feds that came down through the state, or if it's just state-funded. But I think that, and I'm going to go out on a limb and just say that I think that what happened in Phase One and Phase Two opened the eyes to the state and the Health Department, and I think all funding moving forward, it'll probably be contingent on capping your wells.
It should have.
If I had to be, if I had to guess.
But the only contingency that the county put on the PFAS remediation and this funding that we're talking about was that we would waive any liability against the county or the airport for liability for PFAS contamination, which we refused to do. They blinked. We still got the money. In hindsight, if they were so concerned about the residents' well-being and their health, and maybe they would have put that as a precondition to us receiving the funds, capping of the wells, not waiving liability against themselves.
And then I just want to, this, so this is for the design phase of this, which we will design this to be fully functional, you think, for all functions, and probably maybe even some future functions that could include irrigation. But if we make that decision after construction to just continue to use the wells for irrigation, we can do that, but we'll make sure that it's prepared and prepped for future use.
Additional discussion?
With that, I make the motion that we approve the design services proposal to extend the public water to the Recreation Park.
Support.
It's a motion by trustee Shipley, supported by trustee Rizzi, to approve the design services proposal to extend public water to Rec Park as presented. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Good work on that, engineer Thorne. Thank you. Item zero five eight, twenty twenty five. Consider approval of change order request for construction services on the Cascade Road Bridge pedestrian improvement project. Andrew Smith or Mr. Thorne?
I'll take it. And then Eric can add to it. So if you remember back in June of twenty twenty five, Spaulding Decker presented us with a change order of over sixty-six thousand dollars for work on the Thornapple River Bridge, and it was met with some some kickback and was not approved by the board. So you directed myself and Eric to go back and meet with them and negotiate and look at a an amended invoice and for them to go back and work with the county. They did come back in August with an amended invoice of forty-six thousand, forty-three thousand dollars, I believe it was.
Forty-six.
Forty-six thousand dollars. And at that point, we thought it was appropriate to pull together the Infrastructure Subcommittee, which is Supervisor Les Prince, trustee Nord Dyke, and trustee Shipley. And we discussed what would and would not be acceptable, and Eric had further conversation with Spaulding Decker as well. Out of that came a recommendation that, yes, there was additional work done, but the township was not going to bear all the cost to that. And we penned a letter, which you have a copy in your packet tonight, which we sent to them saying that we would accept and consider twenty-three thousand dollars as a fair invoice and compensation for the extra work that was done. There was confusion between, I think, between the engineering firm and the construction company, which is no fault of the township. When we took this from one phased construction project to two because of the delays that happened last fall. But we did not get any response other than they accepted our recommendation of twenty-three thousand dollars. So unless Eric has more to add to it.
I would just reiterate that that answers Mr. Van Solkma's question. Did they talk in between? The real answer in my conversation with Spaulding Decker is that they missed the opportunity when the project schedule shifted to reevaluate the hours that it would take of inspection that would go into it. And I think that's the short of it. They just, they didn't, they didn't correctly predict that, and then when they when they caught that, they didn't, they didn't come back to board in an appropriate time.
And I think the letter memorializes that and expresses our our concern and disappointment in the service that was received, or not the service, because the service was good. It was actually the communication.
It did apologize pretty profusely.
Thank you to trustee Shipley and Nord Dyke on the Infrastructure Committee for kind of coming up with those numbers.
Good work. Make a motion to approve the change order for construction services on the Cascade Road Bridge.
Support.
Motion by treasurer Corstange, supported by trustee Nordhook, to approve the change order request as presented. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Next, the additional new item zero five nine, twenty twenty five, and that would be waiver of potential conflict of interest between Cascade Charter Township and Englesma Homes on a potential development. Do we have someone from Foster Swift online?
Yes, this is Leslie Abdu from Foster Swift. Can you guys all hear me?
Yeah, really good.
Hey, how was everyone?
Good. How are you?
Fantastic.
Good, good. So just briefly, one of our partners at Foster Swift has represented Englesma Homes for several years, and they have asked him to draft certain documents related to an extension of a private road in Cascade Township. This is the Terra Nova development. Now, our firm hasn't done any work on behalf of the township regarding this development. It's my understanding that Mike has spoken to Andrea about the project and is not anticipating there being any anything adversarial about it from the township's perspective. But because the development is within the township, it's technically a conflict for us under the Michigan Rules of Professional Conduct for Attorneys to assist either side on it unless we obtain appropriate waivers from both parties. Englesma has agreed to waive the conflict, and so we're asking if the township would agree to do so as well. Of course, if any dispute does arise with this or any other project that Englesma is a part of in the township, we couldn't represent either party against the other anyway. So in any event, the waiver would need to be approved by the township board and then Englesma separately. My understanding is the work on behalf of Englesma is limited to the documents related to the private road extension, and the documents, I believe, are being drafted in consistent with the new ordinances as well. So I don't, we don't anticipate any issues or, like I said, adversarial nature of the drafting of those documents, but happy to address any questions you may have regarding our role or the reason for the waiver, the request for the waiver.
So what are the documents?
So it's my understanding they're recorded documents that need to be submitted to the Register of Deeds, so like the private road maintenance agreement, the agreement between the developer and the homeowners that will be serviced by the private road.
How many units are on this private road?
I do not know the answer to that question. That would be something I'd need to get from my partner. But my understanding is it's just the, it is an existing private road, and it's the extension of it to add additional homes to the development. Again, I, it's my understanding, the role is limited to the drafting of those initial documents, and the reason why it presents a conflict is because those documents would ultimately need to be submitted to the township as part of the approval for the private road.
Leslie, I understand that this is really focused, this is between us and Englesma Homes, but it's, it sounds like the primary focus is with this specific neighborhood. But Englesma Home has done other projects within the township that perhaps there could have been disagreement.
Yeah, yes, but I don't think we have represented Englesma in any of those situations. It's only in issues where Englesma has retained or has asked to retain our firm in connection with some development. We obviously don't represent Englesma in every development or every project that they have that may occur in the township. The way, the conflict triggers when we are asked by either party of an existing client to be involved in a project that may impact another existing client. So my understanding is there hasn't been any other projects since we have been representing the township that Englesma has been involved in, that we have advised them on or provided any legal legal consultation for them on.
Leslie, this is Timmy. I'm really not in favor of waiving this. I want you to represent us.
Well, what I can say to that is, if there is no conflict waiver, we cannot represent either party, so that the waiver goes both ways, essentially. If there were, if there was to be any sort of dispute or, you know, a question related to those documents, then we would have to waive our representation as to both sides. The conflict goes both ways, in other words.
Well, I'm just saying, I'm not in favor of waiving this, so.
If the other party has already agreed to the waiver and we don't, then how would it proceed from there?
It has to be a mutual waiver from both sides. We would not be able to represent either the township or Englesma in the in that development.
So either way, if anything goes south, you guys are out for us and them?
Correct, even if there is a waiver.
Well, if we don't get you guys, then I don't think they should either.
Correct, yep. If there's no waiver.
I'm just joking, I didn't like get it.
Yeah, if there's, if there's no waiver, we can't represent either side in either way. And if there is a waiver and it becomes adversarial in nature, we cannot represent either the township or Englesma. That is not a wavable conflict.
Are these documents that need to be recorded as, are they being prepared as part of their application for approval?
I believe so. I believe so, yes.
Because I know.
I have not, our firm has not, our municipal group has not obviously done any work in this capacity, and I don't, obviously, the attorney that represents Englesma has not done any of the work necessary yet either because we need the conflict first, but that's my understanding is it's the development documents related to approval of the private road between the homeowners that are serviced by it.
Because we had a bad experience with Englesma in the not, not so distant future.
Can I just add two cents to this?
Pass.
Pass, whatever.
But recent.
Can I just add two cents to this to give some more context? So this has recently come up, as in, I think it came up on Friday.
As in sliding your application before the new zoning ordinance?
No, no, no. There is no application that's been submitted, and the conversations that staff has had have actually been with the current property owner, not Englesma Home, because Englesma is looking at purchasing the property from another owner. So to build the homes. So just to give some, a picture of this, but I don't want to go into all of the details because we have not reviewed documents, have not received an application, so.
And again, I, I am a I don't know, it's, it's a I'm rubbed a little bit the wrong way because of our past situation with Englesma. And so then this comes up and it kind of sheds more light on that and puts salt in an old wound.
I don't like how it looks to our planning commission to get an application with Foster Swift on it.
Good point.
I think it's, I get the professional courtesy, Leslie, so I can appreciate both sides of it, but the optics of it, I don't like.
It's a good point.
I totally understand. I totally understand. And, and for what it's worth, I, we have to bring this to the attention of the township. It's, it's just a, an ethical obligation on our side. Um, before we can engage with either side. So that's why we, we brought it to the board's attention before anything further was done. So either way, you know. No harm, no foul. We just needed to at least, um, you know, bring it to your attention and request the waiver if it was not going to be, um, a concern on either side.
Yeah.
So how would we word this?
You should, you should.
Make a motion to approve it and then you vote no if you don't want it.
Yeah. Negative votes are bad. Yeah.
Right. So, okay. Thank you, Leslie. Is there any further discussion or anything else you would like to add?
I'll make the motion to waive potential conflict of interest with Englesma and Foster Swift.
I'll support the motion.
Okay. All in favor?
Oh, of the motion?
Yeah. No. Yeah. Do you want it to pass?
Uh, no, I do not want, I do not want to have this passed. Do not want the waiver. So.
All in, so all in, no, just all in favor? Opposed?
No.
Motion does not carry.
Right.
But thank you, Leslie.
Right. Thank you.
But that was a great point. It is a great point. Uh, having no items for discussion, now's the time for public comments. Uh, comments on anything rather related to tonight's agenda items or just in general?
Hello, Elizabeth Cram, 3410 Winterberry Court. Thank you for that entertainment of the last five minutes. I was at Cascade Rec Park this weekend at my son's soccer game and heard three different conversations where people were commenting on how wonderful the fields were looking. So I wanted you guys to know that, uh, people are noticing and they are really appreciating it. So good job. There. And, um, we kept our well open to water our grass. And I'm glad we had that opportunity because water is more expensive than I ever thought it could be. So thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Sorry.
But, um, I'm Julie Jander Noah. I live in Ada Township. But I'm curious about Cascade Township. So I've been searching all of your developments and neighborhoods and Terra Nova is one. So that's really interesting for me to hear that.
Are you a Realtor?
No.
Oh, she's looking at me.
No. Like to stay away from them? Uh, no, I'm just kidding. Uh, we're just looking in outside of Ada Village, which takes us to Cascade. And I'm, I am very nosy about how you're working things here. That's okay. Anyway, so I find that interesting with the Terra Nova and. Um, just some of the developments that you have going in with the roads and. Whatnot. Um, but I am partial to well water. That's my, I should let my husband speak. That's his soapbox. And he could explain better the nuances that you're engineer. That's really interesting talking about. And one of the big issues is I want to drink well water. I hate our city water. We pull it out of Lake Michigan. So. When you're talking with the water and at the rec park, not that I'll move here, but, um. Yeah. Are they wells? Are you pulling out of the river, the lake? What are you doing with, um, that would be interesting for people to know and remember. That there's still wells more than likely. So you still could get PFAS contamination. So my niece in Georgetown Township, I did a water test for her, instructed heavily by my husband how to do it right. Pulling out of Lake Michigan, we had E. coli come back. If you're not testing that every single day, you have no idea what you're drinking in your city water. So it's a great idea to keep it for irrigation for cost. And, um, always remember it still comes from a well. Unless it's Lake Michigan. But, you know, anyway, I'm just curious. So do you know?
It's like Michigan.
Um, that rec, is it, uh, is Lake Michigan?
Or the, the city water would.
It's the Lake Michigan. Okay.
It's a well right underneath for the wells.
It doesn't come right out of the mich, like Lake Michigan and then you're filtering it?
The Grand Rapids Water System.
Yeah, which is Lake Michigan. So have you ever tasted it?
We have, we have been.
Times.
It's horrible.
The drinking fountain right over there.
Horrible. So anyway, I just wanted people to realize that it's usually generally either well, or if you're pulling out of Lake Michigan. Unless you're testing it every day, your city water can be filled with God knows what. So always remember that.
Thank you.
Those who don't know. But anyway, thank you.
Welcome to Cascade.
The city of Grand Rapids does issue a water quality report every year. So. While, while your, your general comment is true. They'll say even to the smallest tiny degree, there is a little bit of PFAS in Lake Michigan water that ends up in the water system. They, they do test. And if anybody ever has a weird taste in their water, call the city of Grand Rapids. They can come out and test your water. So nobody should have to tolerate weird stuff in their water from the city of Grand Rapids.
Ken Vandercock, 7200 Leighton. We had to buy out Tuffy. And it's sitting there dead. When are we going to do something with it? And, uh, there's some trees in the park there in Tassel Park. Are we getting them cut down or?
Yep. Dan, I've actually been working with trustee Rizzi on some local vendors and Dan's working on that. It's going to take some equipment to get over that one bridge, but yes.
It's. Are they going to knock that building down too, or is that staying?
That, well, I'll answer my questions or when we get to the end. Yep.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Nick Casarolos, 295 Berwick. Um, I didn't see it, but my neighbors is telling me that the last couple of days, the bridge has flooded, flooded again. Um, so they come to me because I come to these meetings. I said, well, I'll ask, but I can't tell you that I saw it. Um, so I'm just kind of curious. And Berber Property, I saw some people out there today. Maybe they're getting ready to demolish it. But if somebody could give us a report on. The purchase of the property and then what the plans are for taking that down and building that pathway under the bridge. That would be great. And just so you know, um, and I talked to manager Smith about this. Uh, a couple of months ago to see if maybe we, there could be a sign on either side of the bridge that identifies the river as being the Thornapple River. Um, and so I called King County Road Commission and they said, was there a sign there before? I said, no. Well, then there's probably not going to be a sign now. Um, but I find it unusual that you can't put at least one sign attached to a post, attached to a lamppost. I, I don't really know what the requirements are, but. That's two cents for today.
Every other river has one.
Exactly.
Thank you. Anyone online? Manager comments?
Sure. Um, so I'll just answer some of the questions that were asked. In regards to, um, the Tuffy site, supervisor will probably have some comments on this as well, as well. The DDA did award a contract for a consultant to come in and do the final designs, put together the construction documents. So that process is moving forward, but it's still in the design process. But in regards to the site itself now. Um, it's not going to change until the construction starts on the final, final project. I will say if the project comes in in multiple phases or as suggested in that, that will be phase one because it's such a forward facing corner. Um, so, so continue to stay tuned for that. We continue to do updates on our website too, on the projects page that talks about that process. Um, I know it's a nice orb, but it is, um, we're moving through that, that process. In regards to the doctor's office, to be determined again, that will, um, be determined with the final design. I'm assuming that's the building you were talking about. Um, so to knock it down, um, we're not sure yet because it could be rehabilitated into something else. The foundation could be used and it could be, um, something else could be built on top of it. So to, again, to be determined on that. Um, in regards to the bridge flooding, we are aware of that. I know trustee Rizzi showed me some pictures today. Like he got in touch with, um, with Eric. Um, so we'll be addressing that with the, um. With the, with the road commission, um, it's not just the bridge either. We had some more flooding down, down by Walgreens, which was not normal. Um, so there's something going on that we will, um, get to the bottom of.
Can I add one more spot? Sorry to interrupt you, but down Cascade Road two, where they put in those, um, fiber optic cable connections. They went through and put buried the boxes, but they didn't remove the whatever around the drain, the black. You know what I'm talking about?
Actually in the drain, like a black bag. It's a spy silk sack. I'll, um.
They didn't remove.
The county has a, an inspector assigned specifically to that. I'll, I'll send them, uh, give them a call tomorrow or send them an email to let him know. That the drain issues I, um, I have a voicemail in with road commission today. So they're maintenance supervisor. So. I, I suspect I'll hear back from him tomorrow about, they should be able to get out there and I imagine clean out or clear any butt blockage that's causing an issue.
And then in regards to Verbergs, we're still moving forward with that process. Um, who was there today? I, I cannot comment on. I don't know who that would have been.
Was it environmental?
I, I don't know.
Oh, sorry. I was just saying, said environment.
Oh, okay. So I guess you do know.
No, no, I'm just, just for reading and I knew you were doing it.
Yeah. I did not see anybody out there, so I don't. That's all. I don't have anything else.
Can we, can we do a sign? Uh, we don't seem to have to be in the right way, right? Brother Thornapple River?
I, I, I think we could. Um, I'm surprised that that's the reaction response. Cause I did forward it on to Jerry and he said, get back with him. He hasn't gotten back with me, who's the head of the road commission, but we've got lampposts up there now. We've got ways that we could. River signage is pretty standard. I could probably go to a website and order myself. So.
Just make it blue.
Good. I'll do a green like everybody else. So.
I think the county's response to the resident is poor.
Yes, I, I, I would agree with that.
Yeah. Probably like before lunch.
Road commissions don't want more signs, generally speaking.
Yeah.
That's hard.
Plenty of the signs already are ignored by drivers. So their fear is to add a, a, a wayfinding sign like the river sign, I think, is the knee jerk reaction is to say, heck no. But we can certainly extend that conversation.
Yeah.
Great. Board comments. Trustee Shipley.
As always, thank you guys and gals for being here tonight. Appreciate it. When we see our bosses, at least we know that our bosses are interested in us. Even though we can't always come up with the same answers, we try. Um, it's interesting. Um, first of all, thank you for coming from Ada. That means that at least people outside of township are listening to us as well. And, um, Ken, can I agree with you? It's one step at a time. Tuffy is, um. Uh, one of those things that they're working on redesigning and making it flow into the park and being part of the park instead of. Drops off. So, um, and Nick, can't agree with you more on the sign. I mean, everywhere we go, you go, go up to Ada. There's a sign there that says Thornapple River. You go down to Alaska on 68th Street, there's a sign that says Thornapple River. And yet we're designing the tough, the, uh, the, uh, Tassel Park area. And making the river part of the focal part of the township and the village. So you're right on target. And, um, I would apologize for King County Road Commission's rude response to you. But there's no apology that could cover that. So that's all I have to say.
Trustee Nordick.
Yeah, a few comments. First of all, I agree, uh, with, uh, my distinguished, uh, trustee Shipley. Uh, thank you for being here. Um, a couple of other things, uh, I jotted down. I want to start by recognizing the Heritage Festival. I had the opportunity to work it. I think it was a very well planned event. Uh, disappointed Dan's not here now, so I can't tell him that. Um, you know, I think it showed well for our township. I think, uh, unfortunately the attendance was a little bit lower than hoped for. And I think this really was because we had art prize and we had Forest Hills had every one of their high schools have homecoming on the same night, which. Doesn't make any sense to me, given that they weren't coming home. Um, the conflict wasn't known when the staff set the date. So I like, I just can't put that on staff. I did run into our supervisor there. And I hope I'm not stealing her thunder by saying this. Um, she had a great idea. I think in the future, we could set the festival on a standing date. Let's say the third Saturday in September or some variation on that. I think by having a predictable weekend every year, other groups and events can plan around it. Uh, that would give us the best chance to maximize attendance and make the festival an even stronger community tradition. So I think just some food for thought on that, but I really enjoy that and, uh, enjoy working it every year. Um, now I want to address my vote two weeks ago on the capital improvement plan. Um, I voted against it because I ran as a fiscal conservative. And I could not in good conscience support $15 million for the Cascade project when I think it could be done for less. I will never apologize for being a fiscal conservative and voting according to my principles. At the same time, I will never ask a single board member to apologize for according, voting for according to theirs. I firmly believe every board member here has what is best for Cascade in mind. Even when we don't see things the same way or we see it differently. And for that, I say thank you to everybody who's here and for your service. Finally, I want to thank the community members, the staff members. And even some of my fellow board members who reached out over the last two weeks with words of support. It means a great deal to me. And it reminds me why I choose to serve here in the first place. Thank you.
Trustee Rizzi.
I'd like to appreciate everybody, uh, for coming tonight and the comments that, uh. You bring help guide us in our direction. As you can see tonight, we all agreed we're headed. Uh, but there are times like a couple of weeks ago where sometimes we get very passionate about what we do here and. Occasionally we don't all, all agree, but what we do focus on is we all want, uh, what's best for the township. And sometimes we just have a different roadmap of how to get there. I, uh, I also echoing Chris's comments. I also voted no on the capital improvement plan. And the only item on that plan that I disagreed with was the $15 million. And for me, it came down to not having a clear and concise plan yet of what we're doing with. Um, with that area. And I think I know because I've had a lot of residents ask me. Uh, our website shows some preliminary, um. Renderings, which we've been told are not, not really accurate at this point. We have a new design firm working on. Working on that plan. And until we know what that plan is, I can't get behind the, the $15 million. So. Um, for right now, that's, that's where I'm, that's where I'm at. And I just wanted to explain that. I had a lot of staff, residents and board members. Um, give me, um, support and comment on this. And I had a lot of people ask me why. And, and so that's why I wanted to explain it tonight. Thank you.
Trustee Nordhook.
You know, I'm good. Thanks for coming, guys.
Chris Slater. No comments.
Treasurer Corstan. Sure. Um, I stand by my comments from two weeks ago. I think that in no way did I question anybody's perspective or their reason for voting. No. My concern was the fact that we have board deliberation. So that we all, every single board member, all seven of us bring a different perspective to this board. And I think it's extremely important that we have open discussion in front of the public. For everyone else to understand why. And to be fair to the fellow board members, because we all bring different discussion. Point an example tonight, you stating something about not feeling comfortable with the planning department seeing a letter from Foster Swift. And it changed all of our votes. That's what discussion is about. It's for you to bring your perspective and to voice it publicly to the public and to your fellow board members. Not to go back privately and have discussions with people to explain your vote that way to make everybody else look bad on the board. We are here to have discussion and to represent the best we can, the residents of Cascade. And for you to use it for a political reason to go back behind and talk to people about it and make it like we're the bad ones for calling you out for it. It's not about that. That's what discussion is for, is for us to have this discussion publicly. For you to explain to the public and your other board members and to stick up for why you don't want to vote for something. And maybe we will agree with you. Maybe we'll disagree with you, but to have that discussion publicly for everyone to understand why. And for us to understand too, not to just to try to make us look bad later. That was my point. It is not about. You being a fiscal conservative and accusing pretty much the rest of us not. That's not what I meant. I am not trying to call you out in that way at all, Chris. It is about the way our discussion went tonight. That's how our board meeting should go. You should feel comfortable. You should feel comfortable. Saying no, why you want to vote no, and discussing it with the rest of us, not talking privately amongst yourselves before the meeting and just making a statement. That's what my comment was about and I'll stand by that.
Uh, we don't have the final. We don't have the final concept yet for the Tuffy Tassel. But we saw initial, it will be soon and as soon as we get it, we'll share it because there have been changes to, especially to that initial one that's online still. And then that $15 million earmark, I would say, or placeholder is not based on the Tuffy Tassel expansion. That's based on what the DDA, was a calculation based on what they, a conservative estimate of what they could bond out and reasonably pay back. That was basically a very affordable estimate and it would, it's for the overall broad potential village updates, which should include, you know, reimbursement for Berber's property, which we did purchase. Excavating, updating Tuffy Tassel, walkway, connecting the two parcels underneath the road. Updates to the stone house on the inside, so that becomes a public usable space. Updates to the old township hall that kind of sits there vacant most of the time, that really needs that. Potential road changes, not saying there will be one, but when we put that amount there and all this will be flushed out. It's, but I just don't want, but I, I understand people are curious. It's exciting and we'll put the information out as soon as, as soon as we get it. But remember, this has sat there the way it is for decades. Like we've been moving and doing a lot in the last several years. There's a lot of pieces to the puzzle, the DDA, the planning commission, the board. You know, you gotta get the right staff in place. You gotta get the community behind it. So I get that people are anxious about it, but it's sat here for a long time. We're moving as best we can. And I think it's an example of that's why most townships just kind of survive. They don't do because it's hard to coordinate efforts where you can collectively actually move forward. And we'll get there as soon as we can. I'm anxious to, which is why I always prematurely put stuff in the newsletter because I'm excited about it and then I have to walk it back because it takes a little bit of time to actually get there. But keep paying attention and, and we'll put the information out as soon as we have it. Thanks for coming tonight.
I like well water too.
I think I've had enough of it to, I don't know.
I just clarified, there's a well under Lake Michigan. We're pulling out of the well. There are no wells. We're drinking Lake Michigan water.
I wonder how far out.
But I'm getting used to my well water.
I think we're good. I feel so comfortable. I'm just going to go ahead and make the, make the motion to adjourn.
Okay. All in favor? Aye. We are adjourned. Thank you.